It'll take half an hour to clear them up. And you are?
Sandra Selble.
Which one's, uh?
Number three, I believe.
Okay, yes. Yes, Joe. All pretty good yourself? That's good.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Obviously, we've got a bit of...
I think all the other go away.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Hello.
Hello.
Ronald.
Good, how are you? Good evening, Ronald.
I feel like a fan.
We can just... Put their light agendas in.
Yeah.
As long as that all depends on what people are doing.
Yeah.
Hey.
Hey.
I'm good, how are you? Well, our famous Brian Dodd and, uh, setback variance for debt is continued again.
Good, because I don't see any paperwork on it, so...
Well, it's... the paperwork we had is distributed like five minutes ago.
There's no finding that anywhere.
No, no, no.
We need to get that one done.
It's gone, it will have to be redesigned.
One of this guy here has continued again?
Yes.
Oh, you kept yours. How clever of you.
You're very good.
I learned from you too. Finally, you know, after how many years of... I can't remember how long... I can't keep track how long we've been sitting on the board here. Thinking we last got about the same time as Alson's.
About the same time, within a couple of months of each other.
I'm gonna say two years we've been doing this.
Two years?
I think it's longer than that.
Is it that? Time goes by when you're having fun.
Well, I mean, remember that we lost a year to the pandemic.
We did.
And doing it at home, yeah.
And we're doing it online and it just sort of, you know, that never really feels real.
Yes.
Hi, John.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, we got all three of them.
How are you guys?
Really good, you?
Well, we have four of us, so that's a start.
Oh, we've got five.
We got five.
Yes, we got five. Hello, Ron.
Hello.
Are we dealing with the hell thing tonight?
Uh, yes, yes, we should.
Uh, it'll be under new business. Anybody here or other business rather?
No, none of us have heard from it, so... And we have a mechanism, right? For certain amount of absences, it's...
Uh, three unexcused, four absences for any reason, even if excused, um, are grounds for business. And I believe we've got all of that.
Oh, yeah.
And we no longer an electric. Uh, because I love to remove.
All right.
Yes, we should deal with that.
No, David's not coming tonight.
You know, these words, uh, how, um, I was thinking under a little bit this.
And as an agenda, I love this question. Yeah, but I'm trying to...
Um, then I should be directed to write a letter confirming for your town manager to elect, um, Mr. Wilk's lack of participation and... I know there were little requires an amendment, I guess I could just do it.
Okay.
But I thought it might be better.
Yeah. Her optics.
Yeah, you know, we just...
It may have been done that way in the past for the sake of expediency.
Oh, how nice.
I might have been looking for those because I had to go back in the house and, you know, you don't, you wear them so on and off, you wear them every day.
I found, I found some of the tags here. Somebody who's actually sold a bag of fifty, unused ones for fifty bucks, I'm not fifty bucks, five bucks, uh, for fifty of them. So I snatch those things, they're sitting in my cupboard.
That's somebody who thinks about...
So I literally have, you know...
So you have them, yeah, sure.
Okay, not yet.
If anyone has their certificate of mails, anyway, you can give them to me as your application gets filed or... Yep. Yep. My eyes in it? Is that something?
No, no, they're only going up sixteen feet. The only variance here is side yard. This here.
No, but this should be...
Their height's fine.
Uh, no, actually, anything that's in red...
But that's the change. It's sixteen feet high.
Ah, okay.
Within that's well within...
Okay, I didn't, I missed it.
Getting time for the pink jukes gotta go, Steve. How's work?
Good.
You know, I look at this and...
For...
Someday, so...
Everything ends up being as a bear, as a bear.
Yeah, Tom Town is ten. Thirty up there just isn't ever gonna work.
But it keeps us in business.
That's true.
Okay, well, I guess, okay, it's time.
All right, everyone. Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. This is the Town of Winchester Zoning Board of Appeals' regular meeting for Tuesday, October 26th, 2021. For our, we're calling our role today. I'm Philip Allen and present. How, excuse me, Dave Carter is absent excused. Ron Dew?
Here.
Aubrey English?
Here.
I'm sorry, Paul Marino?
Here. John Pollack, here.
Okay, so we have a full quorum tonight, so we'll be able to hear all, all the applications that are scheduled. Also, uh, just if anyone here has not had the pleasure to be before us before, uh, I thought we would, we'll explain our procedures. So, uh, as each application, each application comes up on the agenda, we call the application and open the hearing. The applicants come up, they get a chance to present their project however they, however you want, um, and there's an opportunity after you're pretty much done, or there can be a dialogue between the board and the applicant, you know, if some, if a question arises while you're discussing your project. Once you're done, and once we're done, uh, we open the hearing to comments from the public. And if there are comments from the public, if anyone here, for example, is here specifically to speak to a given application, kindly address all of your questions or comments to me as chair rather than to the applicant, um, and that just helps keep things orderly. And... Oh, uh, yes, um, I did formally, we're se... Ron Dew is, um, an alternate member of our zoning board of appeals for the time being, and we are officially seating him for tonight. Okay, thank you. And I think that covers it. Okay, oh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, in terms of voting, um, votes, the way that we pass votes on this board is a little different than some of the others that are ruled by a simple majority. Our, our voting requires that an application receive four votes in the affirmative, um, and so you can, you can safely lose one of us and still get your project, but if it's only three to two, then your application doesn't pass. And since we have a full complement of, of, uh, of a seated, we have a full seated board, so we're gonna go ahead. And I think that's it. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I am, God, I'm confused tonight, I'm sorry. Uh, once, uh, once there have been comments from the public, uh, we close the, uh, we, then the applicant has an opportunity to, uh, you know, have a last word. And we close the hearing, and the board, uh, has the opportunity to ask, to have a discussion among ourselves if there's any issues that we want to discuss about the application, and then the motion is, the hearing is closed, the motion is read, and, and then we vote. So, that's the way things will go this evening. And, uh, I am reopening now ZBA application 215275 variance for 352 West Wakefield Boulevard, continued from last month. We have a request to continue again. May I have a motion to continue this application?
So vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Zoning Board of Appeals 21-5282, a variance at 169 West Wakefield Boulevard for the Alsons. Sir, kindly come up and...
Jeff Alson, nice to meet you, everybody.
Uh, do you prefer to take, do you prefer to stand, or would you like to have the table and...
The table's yours if you like.
I'll stand.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'm hoping you'll approve my application, so, uh, I can put up a garage to protect my property. Quick story, last winter I had a car shed up, which are kind of unsightly, it was supposed to be rated for snow, I found out while I was on vacation that it wasn't. Well, it wasn't rated for eighteen inches of snow that one time that we got last December. It fell down, did eight thousand dollars worth of damage to the car I had inside. So, it's one of the main reasons I wanna put up a garage. I don't think it's possible, due to the narrow width of my lot, to do it without a variance. That's about it, I'd like to thank Planning for their help, and Mr. Dew for coming out to look at it the other day. Any, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
What's the status of the existing shed that you described as a shed?
As far as status...
Is it structurally sound?
Yeah, it's been there for twenty, thirty years, as far as I know.
And, and there wasn't an option of, of building on, you know, to build onto or with? I know you've got your new garage set right in front of the existing shed, there was no way to accomplish what you needed to do by, say, rebuilding the shed on its existing...
The shed that you're talking about with the snow isn't what is depicted on the plan, right? You're talking about there was something else located?
No, there was just a temporary, uh, garage.
Like on steel tube or aluminum tube structure?
Yeah, like a Shelter Logic type.
Like a carport or something?
Shelter Logic, right? Is that what it was?
Yeah, yeah, a tarp shed.
Those temporary TP's.
Right, right.
Just to try to keep the car that I had there out of the weather.
Sure. But is there, have you considered rebuilding on that footprint, uh, to accomplish what you want in terms of protecting cars?
Well...
Is there? Because if you did that, there would, you know, you're on your footprint, it's grandfathered, and there would be no need to...
But there's not enough room.
It's only eight feet.
It's only nine feet deep.
Ah, okay.
So, okay. It seems to do the least amount of harm and not add to any impermeable soil or anything like that, just to build that out in front of it over the existing asphalt driveway.
So like, so how many like vehicles are you wanting to put into this garage? Is this like a two-vehicle garage and some storage, is that what you want?
It's gonna be mostly like, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, just two vehicles and then storage for lawn mowers and, you know, other stuff I want to keep out of the garage.
So, um, you talked about needing a variance, um, no matter where you placed it. I mean, if it was centered in this spot, you'd only be two feet, uh, off on a variance because it's thirty, the, the guideline is thirty feet on both sides.
Right.
So if you were centered, you're very close, and as you look at the width of the property, potentially if you move the thing back a little bit, you could have the side yard setbacks.
Move it back to where?
Well, if you were, as it appears to me, and I don't have a ruler, but this widens here than it is here.
Yeah.
Right, and we're, and it's being measured at this narrowest point where the garage is, and you've got forty-two feet here and sixteen here, you're within two feet here. So if you were moving, if this proposed garage was centered and moved back, you probably could be within the thirty feet requirement.
Well, this, this is the side yard here, so...
Right.
So it would have to be, like, in order to get thirty-five feet here and thirty-five feet here, you only got about ten feet in the middle, or it wouldn't be in the side here.
Right, I was thinking thirty, it's actually thirty-five, you're correct, but in, if you moved it centered and back, you might be close enough here, I don't know what that...
Yeah, but then, but then I would be increasing the impermeable soil.
You're building this over the asphalt that's there?
Right over the asphalt.
That's why the impermeable... I was wondering why we're putting it there.
I guess, you know, I'm at twenty-two percent now, and I don't want to increase that.
Understood.
Not necessarily.
I didn't know there was out trouble underneath it or not, so that makes sense. So this is the...
Yes.
What you're planning on?
The top one is what's there now. So, this, it, this is gonna be in front of this, so that's why you still see this, you know what I'm saying?
I see, so the open bays are getting built in front of...
That will be built in front of the open...
Do you have a photo of the shed by any chance?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
So will the existing shed be torn down and lower the garage?
No, will be added on in front of it. The existing shed is on concrete piles, it's, you know, it's constructed very well.
Okay.
Are you connecting the, the existing shed directly to the new garage?
Yes.
So that you have open passage between the...
I'm gonna connect it right to the existing garage.
I understand, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you, I will open, uh, open this now to anyone from the public who would choose to comment or ask questions. Sir, uh, please state your name and address.
My name is Ted Hanson, I live at 171 West Wakefield Boulevard, I'm the abutting property owner, and I wanted to come and speak in favor of this project. There is a shed that's been there, I've been up there for twenty years, there's a shed that's there now, the extension on it allows him to cover, I saw what happened to his vehicle last year, um, and I am very much in favor, and I'm sorry that he has to give up this part of his driveway in order to be assured or to get the best opportunity to be approved here tonight because of the non-permeable, permeable soil that we all go through on the lake.
Yes, you do.
So I, I, I am here to speak in favor of it, uh, the easement that you would give him is on my side, I have no problem.
I understand. Well, actually, which side?
He's right here, he's on the, he's on the short side.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this application? Uh, hearing none, uh, the last word, sir, is, uh, is yours, do you have any last words for us?
No, sir.
Okay, all right then, um... Okay. Pardon me, not yet. So with this, we close the public hearing. So with this, we close the public hearing, and just for those of you who haven't been through this before, that means that no new information can be offered to affect our choices or decisions, that's just like it's all done as of now. So, anyway, would you kindly read the motion, sir?
Motion to grant a variance pursuant to 11.g.b.i.i. of the zoning regulations for Application Number 21-5282, for a nineteen-foot southerly wide yard setback for a twenty-by-twenty-nine garage per the drawings submitted for the property located at 169 West Wakefield Boulevard.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'm good.
All, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signal.
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed? You have the project, sir.
Thank you very much. You bet.
And the reason?
Reasonable request. Would it help you to have your plots, your, your site plans and stuff, the copies of your site plans?
Well, I have enough, I'll do that.
Okay. For, calling now ZBA Application 21-5281 for a variance at 120 Coast Street for San Please kindly introduce yourselves with, for the record, all three of you.
I'm San Vasil. I'm trying to get this one, actually, 303C.
Thank you. Okay.
Basically, we're here to go for a variance for the side yard. Yet, the Silver Residence has an existing house, they need to take care of their aging mother, the house is pretty small for the family to live in, so they need, they need to put an addition on in order to accommodate their needs. We've explored various options and additions for the addition. We've looked, the front yard, basically, we're already at pretty much ten feet from the setback, so we still look for more additions there. On the north side of the house, we have, we have a small side yard direction, so we didn't have room there. When you look to the east, it looks like there's a lot of room, but there's a very, very substantial slope dropping off the back of the house that there's, there's really no feasible way to put an addition on it, if you're like four stories high in the back of the house. So, it left us to the only other option, which is, which is on the south end of the house. So, in order to achieve the size of the addition that they need to accommodate their family, it basically puts us fourteen and a half feet from that sideline, because they know we're required, the zoning requirement is third, so that's, that's what we're here to ask for, so you should decide that.
I was up there Saturday, they had no choice, it's kind of going inside.
Pardon me?
I was up there looking at, that bank is real steep, you'll never, never be able to put anything back there.
The B is, the slope is off the back where the deck is?
That's right.
Yeah. I didn't get a chance to go up there.
Yeah, it's bad.
Yeah, it's very steep, I mean, in fact, where the house is built, it kind of drops like ten feet right off the back of the house, and then it just goes, and so it's...
Was your house, was your house, did your house begin as a, as one of the fishing cottages on the lake, as far as you know, or?
Not that I know of.
A lot of, a lot of very small cabins, really, are, became the basis for what are sometimes now very, you know, much larger houses. And some of them, some of the small cottages still exist essentially the way they were built a hundred years ago. So that was really just my curiosity, if you were in one of those, or...
The backyard is probably fifteen, eighteen feet.
Well, that's true, and this is on Coast Street, so that doesn't, I'm sorry. This is a rarity to actually go talk to an application that's not in the Highland Lake District.
It's not on the lake.
Yes, I'm sorry, I am not on my game tonight, I hope everyone will forgive me.
Says on here, your shed was to be relocated, I mean, what would you...
That's coming down.
It's just coming down completely?
Yes, completely.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that?
Nope.
Okay.
Does that have to go into the motion, or is that just okay that it's in the minutes?
If the, the Silvers have just said that they intend to remove the existing shed entire and not relocate, just...
The, and the minutes will reflect it, you can also include it in a...
Amended in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Just because it's in here on the documents that we have?
Okay, so we can do that. All right. Okay, well, hearing none, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this application, you can, you can take your seats if you like, but you, you will get a last word of opportunity, so don't go far.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this application? Yes, ma'am, can you give us your name and address?
Jane Marshall, 110 Coast Street, my neighbors, and I'm very happy to see the sufficient room in their homes so they can get to their lives. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. All right. Hearing no others, you do have a last word if you wish to have one. You've said everything?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, I will, I will close the, the hearing on ZBA Application 215281. And so, we are going to amend the motion to include the removal of the indicated shed on the site plan. Shed indicated on the site plan. All right. Would you kindly read, sir?
I will. Motion to grant a variance pursuant to 11.f.b.i.i. of the zoning regulations for Application Number 21-5281 for a fifteen-point-four-foot southerly side yard setback and a 1.9 impervious surface coverage for a 24-by-30-foot addition per the drawings submitted for the property located at 120 Coast Street, existing shed on site plan to be removed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stinson, you have your project. Do you need your plans, your site plans, or any of that for the work you're doing?
No, we're all set, thank you.
Okay.
Reason?
Reasonable request.
I don't have anywhere else to go to, after the hardship of the backyard, but...
Yeah.
That works.
Say that again, Paul?
Well, the, the topography of the lot itself...
Didn't allow for anywhere else to go.
There was, there, and thus, the topography led that...
I like that. You know, like a more detailed reason for the record is a good thing.
So with the hardship of the slope of the backyard, they had no choice but to go.
Hardship of the topography.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're just ripping right through. All right. So, opening now, ZBA Application Number 21-5283 for a variance at 107 Rubbrook Road. Kindly come forward.
Hi, my name is Liz, I'm a smart person, I'm the owner of 107 Rubbrook Road, and we were talking about this tiny cabin, we live in a...
You live in one of the...
We live in one of those tiny cabins, and what we would love to do is, our house is really tiny, we love it, we're not kind of like, tidy and, you know, do anything major, like, you know, doubles or quartering, but we'd really like to have more room for when our family comes over, like, you know, cooking and doing that stuff, so what we propose to do is make a bigger kitchen and connect our house and garage, and also put on a steam porch to just kind of have more room for people when they come over, and it's not like a really big affair or anything like that, but just a little space. And then, the other piece to notice, we come over in the two acres, only really anything we do, like even just a little, we only have a half acre lot, so we could, I mean, let's go for you to kind of go through everything that we want to do. And I'm trying to think of other things that would be relevant, we really wanted to kind of do everything the right way, so we took all the plans and the joint to the border of health to get, you know, get everything clear for all the, the stuff they needed. We didn't have a lot of room to, just so that we could meet all their clearances for the different stuff, so we didn't have a lot of, like, places we could move things, I guess is the way to put it. So we tried a few different things, but kind of eventually got to where we are today. Oh, right, yes, thank you. A lot of other people were having, they would come, but we had our neighbors write letters, so...
Okay, um, do you have...
Have puppies, puppies, maybe?
Uh, yeah, what, you can pass them to me, and we will distribute them down.
Sure.
Okay, well, we'll take this up when we get to public comment, because this is essentially public comment.
Great. I'm in girl on support, I should put that out. And I'm trying to go, I'm trying to, just kind of give us more space to kind of...
The way this is done, it doesn't really give you the difference, it does. It says required on both sides, and it's actually give us the...
Oh.
Huh?
I see something pressing down.
Yeah. So, all right, so...
I, I think that the, you'll see that the zone says Highland Lake Zone, it's really RR, the setbacks that he includes mirror the RR setbacks, so this is...
And this has been put in for this Highland Lake.
Yeah, and additionally, the column on the right is proposed despite it saying existing, because you'll see that the impervious surface coverage is going up to 10.1% with... You know, he didn't call up the setbacks, but, you know, the draft motion, you know, the distances are there where draft motion can be prepared based on the dimensions depicted.
So we're looking at increasing impervious by one point something?
Yeah, 1.4. And maximum impervious surface in the RR district. Wait for it.
And yours is...
It's, I want to say it's fifteen, but I'll confirm that in one second. You know, fifteen is the most restrictive, and... I'll go to the beginning.
It's nice when the tables are side by side in there, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen percent impervious surface coverage is the max that you can have in the RR district.
And so the, under the proposed plan, it would be 10.1% coverage, and so within, there's no variance involved.
They're not seeking it, right, they're not seeking coverage.
There's no variance involved with that.
Nope.
Can you, so we're looking at the front, so they're looking for a front setback variance, which is required as the, indeed, to fifty feet?
Seventeen-foot front yard variance is what they're going to need for that four-by-twenty-eight foot overhang.
They're going to have thirty-three when it's done, is that what the number I'm looking at, Pam?
Correct, yep, the closest point.
Ah, okay.
And the existing can't be much less right now, is it? That's what we don't know, I suppose.
Yeah, correct, right, it, it looks like, actually, it may be, what do you have on the front, are those front steps, or what protrudes from the front of the house?
It's an existing overhang.
Yeah, okay, so you see that it's actually, the, it's, it's lessening.
That's where the proposed cover is?
Yeah, it's, it's decreasing from what's there in terms of proximity to the...
So we, we're going to end up at thirty-three feet, we just don't know what it is now. Is that, is there a, is there a number I'm missing somewhere that shows us what it is now? I don't think so.
No, 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 but it looks like it's thirty, thirty-two right now. I can scale it, but...
Well, wait a minute, it's...
Now it's close enough.
You're saying it's getting, the setback is actually going to...
Yeah, it's going back, and then the green is...
It's improving?
Yeah, yeah, that's a decrease in the non-conformity there.
So we're looking for a front, which is getting better, and then also the rear yard for the deck, is that...
A rear yard for the deck, and then a side yard.
For that deck and steps, leading to the addition, or on the other side?
Well, that's thirty-five.
There's no steps there.
And that says thirty-five, which should be within...
Yeah, why don't I pass down opposed motion, because I, I gave this one a good look see.
So looking for seventeen?
Is your front yard considered facing Rubbrook?
Rubbrook, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, front, back yard, side yard and backyard?
Mm-hmm.
Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you.
Obviously, that are so.
So they're looking for, it's on the motion, we're looking for a seventeen-foot front yard setback for a four-by-twenty-eight-foot, which is this...
Which is that thing.
Okay, but where's the seventeen feet, is what I'm trying to get to.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Seventeen, thirty-three minus seventeen, uh, thirty, fifty minus thirty-three is seventeen. They can't meet the fifty-foot front yard setback.
Okay, all right.
So they need a seventeen-foot variance.
Now it's coming together, thank you.
Okay. Oh, dear. And quarter, one-point-four-foot rear yard setback for the addition...
Well, that's, that's enclosing that little gap in between.
Yep. And an eleven-foot rear yard setback for the deck with stairs per drawing submitted. Okay.
Well, then, probably...
And then my asterisk is for that proposed green porch, because when I was drafted it, for whatever reason, I was looking at it as if it were a deck.
Ah, so that also needs part of the front yard, it doesn't need side yard, it needs front yard?
Correct.
Because side yard's thirty feet, thirty-five feet anyway.
Yep, so, so it meets it there, it doesn't need a side yard, it just needs a front yard.
All right, so he has fixed it. Okay. All right, well, I think we know where we're at. Yeah, we got that figured out.
Your surveyor didn't do the table the way we normally see it, so...
We tried to pick the best guy we could.
No, no, it's just people do the, you know, there's variations we encounter all the time, so it's not...
While we ask questions.
Yes.
We're here to help.
Um, okay, let's see here. Any questions, gentlemen?
I think I've asked all the questions I could possibly ask.
Ah.
Sure. Well, there's always more.
What is the meaning of life?
That's a different meeting for a different time.
Yes, that's it, would you shut up? Well, with that, I will now read your letters into the record. Okay. Uh, dated October tenth nineteen twenty one from James Lockton at three Woods Lane, Winstead, Connecticut, zero six zero nine eight. Addressed to the town of Winchester, referring this application to whom it may concern. I am a neighbor adjacent to Carl and Liz Zimmerman. They've made me aware of a variance they are seeking for a proposed addition to their prop, on their property at the above address. I am writing this letter in support of the variance. If you have any further questions, feel free to contact me. Signed, James Lockton. To, addressed to the town of Winchester, please consider this letter of support for the variance at the above applied for construction work on their home address above. Liz and Carl have been neighbors for sixteen plus years. Carl is an amazing builder. Liz and Carl have improved their property with beautiful plants and trees. I consider myself very blessed to have them as wonderful neighbors. I won't make, I'll correct her spelling. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Gail Moraski, one oh nine Rug Brook Road. To the town of Winchester, to whom it may concern, we are neighbors of Liz and Carl Zimmerman and have received notification they are planning to build an addition on their house which requires a variance. Through the ten years, during the ten years that we have been neighbors to Liz and Carl, we have found them to be respectful and courteous neighbors that maintain their property very nicely. The additions and improvements they are planning to make to their residence will only enhance their property and the surrounding neighborhood. Please note this letter as a recommendation to approve their variance request from Kimberly and Brett Marshand. Do you know, happen to know their actual address? They're, they're, they're a neighbor of yours, but.
You know, I do have it, they're on the adjacent property owners, like, one oh two Rug Brook Road.
Thank you. So from the Marshands at one oh two Rug Brook. And lastly, to the town of Winchester concerning this application to whom it may concern, Carl and Liz Zimmerman have applied for variances on their property at the above address in order to do construction work there. Our property borders theirs to the west. I fully support this variance. I have lived next to Carl and Liz for many, many years. They have a deep respect for nature and the land and have been wonderful neighbors. Sincerely, Gigi Saint Peter at one Woods Lane, Winstead, Connecticut, zero six zero nine eight. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing on? We will, actually, you have the last word, if you have anything that you would like to add?
I just kind of think, planning a zoning for all their help.
Good, good to hear. All right, so with that, we will close the application for ZBA, application two one five two eight three for variance, and kindly read the motion.
Motion to grant a variance pursuant to one one dot F dot B dot I I of the zoning regulations for application number twenty one dash five two eight three for a seventeen foot front yard setback for a four by foot by twenty four foot overhang.
Twenty eight.
I'm sorry?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, four foot by twenty eight foot overhang. A one point four foot rear yard setback for a fifteen foot by five foot addition and an eleven foot rear yard setback for a twelve foot by eight foot deck with stairs per the drawing submitted for the property located at one oh seven Rug Brook Road. And also for a twelve foot front yard setback for a twelve, or is that a hundred and twenty five foot?
No, twelve point five.
A twelve point five foot by fourteen point four five feet proposed screen porch.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Nope. All right, then, call the vote. All those in favor of the application signify?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And?
A reason, a reasonable request, and I also would like to note for the record that the effort made to minimize, you know, to minimize impact in their proposal is noted. The town likes to encourage as low impact development, as they call it, so that was, that was, it was good to see that, so. All right. Did you have the copies of those letters?
Yeah, uh, yes.
You got one?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Moving on. With a certain alacrity. All right, our last application for the evening is a variance number two one dash five two eight four for two zero five Perch Rock Trail for Ingrid Pierce.
And just to be on the safe side, those notices were mailed eight days prior, and to be safe, she's asked for our continuance, because now we know that everyone will have ample time to have received it. I had gotten some inquiry from a couple neighbors.
Okay.
These applications were posted on the website, so just, you know, if you would make a motion to continue this application to the November, let me pull up the date in that regular meeting in November. It'll be November twenty third.
I move that we continue application, ZBA number two one dash five two eight four for the November twenty third regular meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Continued.
Paperwork wise, as Aubrey taught us to do. Hey Pam, for fifty two seventy five, can you send out or put those in the packets that, if that one comes back, because it's been continued for so long, I don't have the paperwork anymore.
Okay.
The first one. Same one that I complained that I misplaced mine.
I still have mine.
Yes.
Does John, do you need a copy?
I still have mine.
It's only you and I.
Well, it was a meeting that I couldn't attend.
I know.
And I don't remember.
I'm the only one who's misplaced it apparently.
Well, I may not have picked up my. So anyway, that's enough of that, we are being screened, are we on YouTube?
Yes, you are.
Yes, we are entertaining the world on YouTube, thank you very much. Okay. Moving along, for old business, we have none. For approval of minutes, minutes of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one, does anyone find any errors of fact in the minutes? And a motion to accept the minutes would be appropriate.
I make a motion to accept. Second.
All right, all approved?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you, sir. Correspondence? The LID thing for December? Yes, there, we've been, we're being encouraged to have, to follow up on the low impact development training by having, by having a little, having us, having a short session. To, training session on LID and how it impacts what we do on land use boards, and to do that an hour early at our December meeting.
December twenty eighth at six P M.
So we would meet at six with whomever is going to be helping us with the training, which would last for forty five minutes or so, and then we would have our regular meeting. Is this something that everybody would like to, or good with doing? Is that a possible?
What's the date of our December regular meeting?
Twenty eighth, December twenty eighth.
Yes, okay, yeah. Okay. Well, let's go ahead and schedule it. Okay, on other business, you should have in your packets a meeting schedule for the year twenty twenty two. Any problems with any of these dates for anyone that would prevent us from approving this schedule? Okay, well, I move that we accept the calendars presented by staff.
I'll second it.
All approved?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I am going to be missing a couple months.
Okay, well, just let me know, give us a tell.
Well, if you know what they are, actually, we could probably put them on the calendar now. That saves some infusion maybe for later.
Yeah.
February or March.
Okay.
I believe that there is a name before the Board of Selectmen, where you may be getting another member.
Another person?
Yeah, yeah, which is great.
Okay. We've regularly, over the years, there've been people who, you know, go south for the winter.
Sounds like you might be that.
Just came back, I'm going right back again, yeah.
Okay, it's not on our agenda, it's not on our agenda of other business, but I wanted to raise, we had a brief discussion last month about our colleague, Mr. Wilks, who has missed four at least meetings unexcused, and as we understand, it is now no longer a, an elector in the town of Winchester. So the procedure is for, is for the, us to notify Town Manager and Board of Selectmen that we have voted to, you know, take him off the board, and in this case, we will be making a recommendation to seat Mr. Dew as opposed to, I've just forgotten his last name.
Dave.
Dave, yes. But, you know, Dave has already said he doesn't want to be advanced to a seated position, so you would be next, and so that was, that would be what, what we would recommend to the town. I don't know that we've ever done this before this way on the board, but I would like to make a motion that the board as a whole direct me to write to the Town Manager and Board of Selectmen explaining the situation with Mr. Wilks and making the recommendation regarding Mr. Dew. Second. Any discussion?
None.
Thank you. Oh dear, I'm sorry.
You want a job?
Yeah, really, you want to put up with me forever? Anyway, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This will, this will go out this week, so that we can advance the process as quickly as possible. Okay, is any other business that we don't know about? Okay. If our zoning enforcement officer is not here, so a motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
So moved.
Second. Sir?
If I may, I would just like to address your board and let you know that I found tonight meeting to be a breath of fresh air. I came before this board, I've been here twenty years, and for the first three or four years I was here, just more than was miserable. They denied everything and everybody, particularly on the lake. It is things, and I've heard you say you continue hearings. I was here, I presented my issue before the board, they closed the hearing, and then amongst themselves, they started asking all the pertinent questions. And I put up my hand, I said, can I answer that? No, your hearing is closed. You continue so people can get more information, to bring it to you, so you can complain everything that didn't happen years ago. I know Jeff was here for a hell of a time here.
Well, we could, we could harass him a little bit.
How good your work operates now, and if I wasn't so old, I'd probably even come back with some of the things I wanted to do. I can't believe you deny people the opportunity, not you, in the past, to improve their property, to pay, to get the privilege of paying more taxes in this town. And, and do it in a way, I had a woman, I came in for a shed, I was denied because she didn't like where I wanted to put it. I can't believe, give me something that says it's in the regulations, in the rules, something that I can at least look at and try to address, because she just didn't like where I wanted to put it. And she said it, I don't know what a public, a hearing, can't believe it. You people are doing a great job.
Thank you.
We thank you.
Very much.
We, we.
I second that.
We believe in accountability and doing things the right and fair way.
That's great, it's about time, it's about, now, it may have been, as I said, I stopped coming fifteen years, I had such a bad taste in my mouth, I can't believe it. If I had only known, you know, when this change started to take place.
So we'll see you next month then?
Or, you know, next, next, big drawdown maybe?
Drawdown is a very touchy issue.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I had a deep.
That's a whole different board.
I need a deep drawdown.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
I'm renewing my motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And to anyone who happens to be watching on YouTube, thank you too.
Not that it matters.